And call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education to discuss the budget. We've already called a roll call. I don't believe we need to do that again. We're now still present?
We have, we have one change. Greg is now present.
Okay. Okay. So, moving on to item number two of the special meeting is a discussion of the budget. Alan, since you asked a question first, now we could pick up on your question. Thank you.
Well, if you just turn to page 12, it looks like the final grand total property and program changes, total percent change is forty-five hundred and eleven percent, which doesn't quite seem right. And whether you total the percentage or average the total percentage changes in the column, or whether you do the math between, I don't know, I could be wrong.
Whatever.
But I just figured something, just to double check that.
So, the percentage is accurate if you, if you're doing the percentage across the bottom line from the negative twenty-two thousand to the one million fourteen. And to Jay's point, that's another problem with that program changes category, the way we show that historically, because what happened last year, if you look in last year's budget, the program changes that were originally budgeted in the superintendent's budget were all peeled back to make a negative number, and the negative number made it into the budget. So, now when you become positive this year, that's what happens. And that, we have had Jay's exact discussion in finance committees, because I don't like this section for these kinds of reasons. It's very confusing, and it skews the numbers in strange ways. So, the math is accurate, but it's not an accurate portrayal of what's happening.
Okay, Alan? About as okay as we can get. All right. So then, moving on to item 2A, it's to consider and if appropriate, approve the recommendation of the finance committee to reduce the debt service of the proposed budget by seventy-one thousand six twenty-eight to reflect the March 26, 2019 bond and band sale. I suppose it would probably be a good time to share with the board the results of the bond and the band sale, which I'm sure we were going to otherwise do during the normal meeting, but I suggest we do that now. So, should I give the floor to Nicole?
That's her baby.
Okay, Nicole, the floor is yours. Tell us what happened.
So, we went to, we had the sale on March 27. It took place in our attorney's, our bond council's office in Hartford. The results were very favorable. We opened with the band sale of four million dollars. We received six votes. We went with, or, I'm sorry, six bids. We went with the best bid for the four million, which was an interest rate of 1.71 with a bond premium of forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars payable to the district at settlement. And we proceeded with the bond sale at 11:30. We received four votes, bids. The lowest interest rate was 2.78 with a bond premium of 202,0238 payable to the district at closing, and the closing is scheduled for April 10.
Stephanie, you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I'll just add that both of those interest rates were lower than we had forecasted in our models. So, that's as a result of, that's why we are recommending that we reduce the debt service in the proposed budget to reflect that decrease in the interest rates and to reflect the premiums that we received.
Yeah. Okay. So, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Greg?
I move that we so reduce the net service interest in the budget by the seventy-one, can you remind me that number?
Six twenty-eight.
Seventy-one, six twenty-eight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? No extensions. Okay. The motion passes unanimously to remove, or lower, rather. I'd like to remove, but we can't. To lower the budget for the debt service by seventy-one thousand six twenty-eight. Thank you. All right. Moving to item 2B, to consider and if appropriate, approve the removal of line item expenditure in the amount of seventy-three thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars for the state proposed payment obligation of the teachers' retirement board from the 2019-20 budget, board budget. So, second?
Second.
Michael, thank you. All right. Any questions, discussions? Michelle?
I'm just wondering what, if anything, has changed since the last discussion on this, because I thought we had been advised to put it in the regional budget, and that was what we had told the towns. So, I didn't know if, you know, what other districts are doing and where, where, where this stands.
I don't know who advised us to put, to put it in, other than there were other districts that were doing that, but I don't think we received counsel, any advice from our council to put it in.
I don't think-
Did we?
And Nicole, if I correct me if I'm wrong, we, when we were working with DePitney, when we were coming up with the bond, we had noted that in conversations with other districts where they were looking to put this, some were putting in their budgets, some were not. So, it really had a mixed bag. And at that point, we said we were, and talking to DePitney, they, they said that was actually something favorable for us when we were going to our bond band, but they said if we decided to take it out, it wouldn't impact us with, with any of our ratings or sales.
So, it's, we're budgeting for something that's not yet law. It may never be law. If we put it in and it doesn't become law, then it has to immediately be taken out. We can't then turn around and divert the funds to use for something else. That would be disingenuous. And we've created in a year, in a particularly sensitive year, in the first year of the Aggris program, where we're going to see a spike in that, and we're fighting some pretty severe headwinds just in the public to get them to understand or appreciate what's happening and all the moving parts. It's a very sensitive year. And adding seventy-three thousand into the budget, just on a what-if and maybe, we've created a steeper slope for us to climb in a very sensitive year. I think in any other year, it might not have been such a big deal and maybe a nice to have. We're not even sure if this were to become law, that whether or not the district would be, would be expected to pay, to pay this, or Hartford would be looking for this to come directly from the municipalities. So, I think we've really kind of gotten out in front of this, and, and there's no upside. Because the town is going to be neutral, the towns are going to be neutral regardless of what happens. If this thing does pass, it's a right pocket, left pocket, from, from the taxpayer's standpoint, because somebody's got to come up with it. But I don't see it as our obligation to necessarily step up right now and do this. We're not in a position to do it. Any other? No. My recommendation would be to take it out of the budget. Michelle?
No, I guess, I hear what you're saying. I was in favor of keeping it in the budget, but since it isn't law yet, and, and given the fact that it's, it's only seventy-three thousand to be divided over the towns, so it's not something that is either, it's not the ramp up that they're talking about. So, it's something that we could figure out mid-year. I, I wouldn't be surprised if it passed.
Or just-
But, but since it isn't technically law, I mean, I hear the logic of not putting it in this year.
Right. Michael?
I'm not an expert on all things Hartford, because that's a Byzantine world, but the latest from the newspapers that I've been reading, Governor Lamont has backed off on, on most of the significant changes that were originally proposed about, for example, creating even larger-
The regionalism stuff, yeah, yeah.
Most of all, that he has backed off of. The only thing that I know that he's currently still pursuing would be committees that are looking at where districts can share services. And I think we're on that already, but I have not heard anything about, you know, about looking at sharing teachers' retirement fund costs. I think that's, that's dead in the water politically right now.
I'm not so sure.
Anyone else? Greg?
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that in the event that this were to become law and come back, that we just can't, you know, we, we, we can't just pull it out of thin air. It's not a lot of money. We might be able to find it if we haven't spent all the money we need to spend. But I think that, you know, it is, it would be responsible to leave it in. I don't think it makes a great deal of difference from the standpoint of what the impact is on the bottom line of the budget, but I think it does make a great bit of, you know, have, have some difference in terms of the manner in which we're budgeting our funds and the responsibility we're taking. And those kind of issues, I believe this was one issue that was, you know, at some point, had impressed the, the bond market setting our rates. So, I would be, maybe that they're not as concerned over it as anything else, but it does show a responsible form of approaching it. Unless we think that issue is really debtor than dead, I'd leave it in.
So, you're suggesting that if Hartford passes this law mid, mid-year, and let's say half the school districts budget for it and half don't, they're going to tell the half that didn't budget for it, you're going to have to take this out of your operating expenses and do whatever you have to do, lay off people, cut programs in order to make up for this?
Well, I, I, I agree. It doesn't make a lot of sense. And I would have thought, you know, that that would have been the case, that they would have said, they would have made it effective the next fiscal year, and they wouldn't have tried to do it for the fiscal year coming up. But they only really work on the budget every, every two years, and obviously, they have shown some in Hartford over recent years. You know, remember when we were waiting for our AgSTEM money, and they had never approved a program and then not funded it, and made us wait eighteen months. So, I don't know what's going to happen up there, but I suspect that it, that that degree of common sense may or may not prevail.
Okay. Peter?
I'm really not worried about taking this out of the budget. We have, we have a proposed twenty-two million dollar budget. If you couldn't find seventy-one thousand dollars in this budget that popped out of thin air for some proposal, some project, or something that the state is going to pass, I certain wouldn't worry about where we would dig it up from. When you look at twenty-two million and seventy-one thousand, come on. I've been on this board for fifteen years. I've seen money found all over the place, under tables, in the attic, in the closets. So, don't tell me we have to, we have to worry about seventy-one thousand dollars. What we have to worry about is passing this budget. That's what we have to worry about. It has a lot in it, and it has the Ag program in it. It has other services, and it's very important that we pass this budget on the first crack. We don't want to come back and have to deal with this budget for a second or third budget referendum. So, while it's a small amount of money, it will help the budget a little, but I would agree with Anthony that for the sake of wanting to pass this budget with everything that's in it, and that the new AgSTEM program I would propose, that we can afford to leave it out.
Any further comments? Julie?
I guess I'm agreeing with Pete and Anthony, and that is, I don't feel that if it's not a law at this point, I don't think we should feel a responsibility to put it in. And it does help slightly with what's going to be a very tough budget year.
All right. Stephanie?
I will say I've struggled with this a little bit. Again, I agree with Michelle that, you know, for seventy-three thousand dollars, it's not a massive expense, but I do feel, it's something we discussed at each one of the Board of Finance meetings in each of the towns, and they asked us about it. They asked if we were budgeting for it. It's something that, you know, they were pleased that we were, obviously. But if we don't do it this year, it's something we'll have to consider for future years, because even if it doesn't pass this year, it'll, it's something that's been talked about over the last several years. You know, again, for the amount, I feel like we can kind of go either way. And I think it's important to debate it, to, you know, to really figure out if we're comfortable taking it out, should it come up at the end of the year, or if, or if we do feel, you know, at this stage, we still don't know. I mean, Anthony's right that we don't know that whether they'll ask for it from the schools, or if they'll ask for it from the municipalities. But I don't know. I'd say it's, it's a discussion we've already had with the towns. It's a discussion that, you know, we should have here, and it may have implications.
John?
I will not vote to take it out. I sat through all the budget workshops. I don't know where we're going to get seventy-three thousand. The main budget, the school budget was pretty flat. Actually, it was down eight hundred dollars. So, I don't know what or where this hidden money would come from. And where will we get it if indeed it becomes law this year, and we have to, the, the region twelve has to pay it? Next year, I heard that it's tracking for fifty percent. It's going to go from twenty-five to fifty percent. So, if we're behind the eight ball, you know, seventy-three thousand, we're going to definitely have to budget approximately a hundred and fifty thousand next year.
Stephanie?
Nicole, can I ask you quickly, can you overview on the percentages that, that they've structured out? I mean, you said it could be a fifty percent increase, but it's, they're asking twenty-five percent in the first year, correct? They're asking for the towns to pay twenty-five percent of the total in the first year. So, if it doesn't happen this year, next year would be the first year, so it would only be twenty-five percent, correct?
That's true.
I just wanted-
Yes.
So, my understanding of it is that the towns, the municipalities or districts' ultimate responsibilities would be twenty-five percent of their share, and that's a phase in. So, that seventy-three percent doesn't represent our twenty-five percent share. Our twenty-five percent share is actually much greater. And there is, districts with teacher salaries that are above the state median are penalized one percent for every step that you're above the state median. So, the projections for our region are, is forty percent because of the penalties that will be added.
So, is this number, the seventy-three thousand, is that conservative, or is that, I mean, that's just our best guess at the moment?
It's not a guess. The state put out, in the governor's budget, there's a schedule that shows what they're expecting in year one from each town.
So, this would be accurate if they were asking for, this is the number-
If the budget were passed in its current form and that provision were included, that's the accurate number.
Got it.
And John's right, it scales up, because it-
Just to make sure, we wouldn't be surprised with a larger number than this.
Not if it's in its current form.
Thanks. That helps.
Lisa?
I just have a question. Is this already included in the final budget number that we've approved?
Yes.
So, if we took it out, how much of a decrease would there be percentage-wise?
Nicole?
I'm just curious what the numbers, if there was a significant change, if we were to take that out?
So, we were at, prior to this, we were at five and a, five-two-four, right? Five-point-two-four. We took out the debt, we lowered the debt service. What did that bring us down to? Four-point-nine-one?
Nine-one.
Okay. So, we're at four-point-nine-one now.
Okay.
All right. So, from there, Nicole?
It would bring us down to a four-point-five-seven.
Okay. And then, less the revenue, that other number that we're really, instead of one-point-seven, what would it bring us to?
I don't have that calculation, but I can do it.
Okay.
Sure.
Well, while Nicole's calculating that, I just wanted to push back a little on Pete's characterization of this budget, because knowing that it's an agri-science year and with some new, you know, with new eyes on the budget, I, I feel that the categories are tighter than they have been in the past. They're a little truer to actual expenditures, and there's not the wiggle room in there that we have sometimes experienced in the past. So, while at this point in time, I still, I guess, would support taking it out, I do it with, with hesitation, because I think there is a likelihood that this could come to fruition. The state had no issues with messing with the ECS grants mid-year, which put a lot of districts in turmoil. However, we are fortunate enough that seventy-three thousand over our three towns would not put us in turmoil. It would just be really uncomfortable. I think if it were a different year, it would be prudent to budget for it. But I understand the, the desire to take it out when it is not actually law. I, I, I understand that, although I do think it, we, it, it could be painful, because we usually, at the end, are able to, to fund our one percent, and this year, we might not be able to if it passes. We would be diverting funds from that to paying for the retirement.
Michael?
You know, I would just suggest to, that to my colleagues, that, that if you want to know what the towns are thinking about that proposal, and how realistic that would be from a town perspective, you'll see that nine out of ten towns are actively fighting that proposal right now. Look at Ridgefield, look at Wilton, look at most of the districts around the state. Except for the large cities, most towns would take significant hits. So, we're not even talking about the educational community that would be fighting it, but we're also talking about the town communities that are seriously, seriously concerned about this. I don't see that happening anytime soon. I just don't.
All right. Sorry, Jay. Peter?
We're not, we're not putting in the town vote, are we? I'm not going to belabor the issue. I mean, it's a, it's not that big an issue. But I would say this, if I hired a business manager, and she or he had a twenty-two million dollar budget, and I came up and asked, listen, could you find seventy-one thousand dollars in that budget? Come on, who are we kidding? I mean, we don't have to look like heroes. It is more important for us to pass this budget. I can't tell you, this budget goes down, you are in big trouble, because you've got the AgSTEM program hanging over the entire educational system, and there are a lot of people who don't agree with the AgSTEM system and what it's going to cost us, and what the realities of it could be. So, I'm very interested in making sure that, and I've been through multiple budget referendums. You can ask Jay Huber, six, five, seven budget referendums. You don't want to go and lose the first budget, because what you think you can take out of the first budget to pass isn't what the public is always thinking, because everybody has an agenda. So, my issue really is, you want to pass this budget on the first crack. And you can make a case to say, well, put it in, it's not noticeable, but I would take the gamble and not put it in, just for the sake of getting this budget passed. I cannot tell you, from people I talk to in the community, it's very important to pass. I want to see this budget pass on the first crack. That's all I can tell you. I've been through many, many referendums, and you never know what's going to happen once the first goes down. So, it's a small amount of money. If it was larger, I may agree to put it in, but I would say it's not that big a deal. I would say, let's leave it out and see if we can get the budget passed, so we don't have to come back here and debate what the real number should be to get passed.
All right. Any further comment? If not, oh, okay. Sorry, Nicole. Kind of forgot.
The one-point-seven would reduce to one-point-oh-three.
All right.
That's a four-point-five-seven.
So, we'd be saying we're going from a four-point, call it six percent gross increase, and after tuition and grants, be effectively a one percent budget. Right. So-
Four-point-six.
Four-point-six.
Four-point-six. All right. Let's keep, all those in favor then of the motion that's on the floor to remove the teachers' pension of seventy-three, three forty-nine from the budget. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, we can go the other way. All right. Please back, all those in favor. John, thank you. Okay. All those opposed? All, all those abstain? Okay, the motion, it passes. Thank you. All right. I guess we have a final cleanup action, since we have technically changed the budget. I guess, let me, well, it's on the agenda, so let's just do it. So, Alan, do I have a motion?
Oh, I just had a question.
Page eighteen. Maybe not eighteen. Maybe it's seventeen. Page seventeen. Do this enrollment change since the last time we saw this, the projections?
Page seventeen?
Yeah.
Page seventeen hasn't changed since-
Hasn't changed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, I was, I was supporting Dana.
Nicole, do you have a new gross budget number?
She's figuring it. I guess my question is, we have, well, my wish was, my question was, are they any different than, have they changed? Because I hadn't, I, I guess I'm just now finally struck by the fact that if we had six-hundred-and-eighty-two students in last October, then we have six-hundred-and-eighty-six projected for next October, which means we must be offsetting a decline of thirty students if we are adding thirty or so AgSTEM students? Is that the case?
That's what, that would suggest, yeah. That any decrease in our natural population is being offset by, that's assuming tuition in numbers do not change year over year. So, let's assume that, then yes, then your, your question is, or premise is correct.
Well, I was expecting a, a bigger difference, but I guess it's good that we're doing AgSTEM, because that would be even bigger.
That's kind of the point.
Can, can I just speak to that?
Nicole?
These numbers, these enrollment numbers are based on the Prouder projections, and he had forecast a larger decrease than I believe we're going to experience, but he's the expert, so we used his number.
All right. Nicole, can you read out, before we do this final motion, could you read out the new total, please?
Twenty-two thousand eight oh eight four hundred.
Make a motion.
Twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million, eight hundred and eight thousand four-
Four hundred. Yes, Jim?
I'd like to make a motion that the board approve a, a budget of twenty-two million eight hundred eight thousand four hundred dollars, which is a four-point-five-seven increase over last year.
Second.
All right. We have motions on the floor. Any further comments? John?
Yes, just two quick questions. Are we still on track for the fifty-two ASDE enrollment? Fifty-two student?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Then, the two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand four hundred for the grant is off.
For, for the grant?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And also, just as where we, the rest of the board was reluctant to add the money in for the teachers' pension, this grant, state grant, is not payable until the 2020, 2021 budget. So, it's not part of this year's budget, the upcoming year's budget.
It, it is. It creates an obligation on the state to pay us. It's a receivable.
Okay.
And when the towns go into their fiscal year planning, they're going in and, and they're setting a fiscal year from January to December, which means they're taking the back half of this budget, and then they, and then they have to, they have to project what we're going to come in for a budget the following fall, which is also when we're getting that payment. So, from the town's standpoint, when they're calculating the mill rate, it's all in the same period. So, the timing works out for, for them. But we, this program is creating an obligation on the state that's going to deliver money a few months later. an obligation on the state that's going to deliver money a few months later, that's outside of our window, but still within the, in the town's window. So I think it's very much a legitimate claim that we have to take credit for that.
Right.
Not if, you know, but, but for this program, there would be no such obligation.
Right. In addition to that, though, that 4,200 is simply a projection. It's not a definite guarantee. So.
I think it says, John, you're correct. And I think on the, everything that I've read, I believe it's been properly footnoted as an estimate. And if it doesn't, then we need to make sure it gets footnoted properly as an estimate. Because you're right, there's no guarantee. From the standpoint of, the numbers may change, right? So October 1, that's when the line gets snapped, right? And we take a head count. And that's what sets forth the obligation. So whatever is happening on October 1 is what really counts. It could be higher, it could be lower. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Michelle?
I was just going to add, John, that that's part of the reason we go to referendum for the gross amount, and then we stay in communication with the towns as the billing happens, as to the revenue coming in and anticipated, you know, whatever the state's doing, tuition in students. So that part, that's why that part is a projection, but we're required by law to go to referendum with the gross amount.
Thank you, John. It's an important point. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the school budget for fiscal year, or school year 2019-20 for 22,808,400, representing a 4.57% increase, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All right, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And we are adjourned for the special meeting.
Oh, wait, you forgot the last one.
Excuse me. We're not adjourned. I take that back. We're still in session. Yeah, that's actually probably the more important one. So I need a motion to set the date for the district meeting for May 6.
So move.
Michael? Oh, okay.
I moved to set the-
That's fine.
Okay.
Whatever. District meeting date for May 6, 2019, and possible referendum date for May 7, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Greg?
Have you completed every bit of advocacy, advertisement, you know, indicating that the reductions in towns have had a reduction? Has that all been done? Because once we set this budget, we can't spend a penny advocating for this budget.
Greg, mic, please. Sorry. So while you're doing that, when does the quiet period start? It starts the moment we pass this motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Immediately upon passing the motion. So if there was a plan to send something out, mail something out that gave a picture of it and told about the various reductions, and then once the AgSTEM money comes in a year later, this is what it's going to do to the, effectively to your budget, and, you know, Roxbury's going to have a significant decrease in their budget. If that, if the word was going to go out, there was going to be a publication, and it hasn't gone out, we don't want to set this date yet.
Michael?
I think Greg's bringing up an important point, but the board is totally allowed to provide information to the public. We can't advocate for the budget, but we can provide information to the towns, to residents. And this is a complicated budget compared to previous years. And so I think, you know, explaining, for example, the 4.57% increase compared to after revenue, the 1.03%, I think that is an explanation that we are perfectly allowed by law to make, as long as we're not crossing that very fine line.
Michelle?
I don't know the statute offhand, but I think we also have to set, don't we have a 30, 30 days or something like that to set the referendum? So it's April 1. We have a week, technically, I guess, to set that date. Once, it's interesting, though, I did wonder about the possible referendum date. Once we set the district meeting for the 6th, the referendum is automatically the 7th. So I don't know why it says possible. So whether we want to wait a week to set the meeting date for the 6th, I don't, I don't think that really makes sense. I think we have to, I think we have to go ahead and set the district meeting for the 6th, that's set forward in statute.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice. I think it has to be 30 days.
Yeah.
So if we wait a week, then we have to have the, the vote a week later.
Oh, I guess five day, I don't, wait, today's April 1.
Right. So-
I think your point was between now and the 6th.
About the 6th. Oh, okay.
You have to have a special meeting.
Right.
Just to pass that.
Just to do that. Right. Because we have to set it 30 days before the referendum.
Okay, that's what you're saying. So like, within a few days? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, a week.
And to Greg's point, we, we would be establishing tonight with passage of this quiet period, which means we, to Mike's point, we can't advocate.
We can only inform.
We can only inform. Right? Is, we all, Greg, are we all in agreement on that?
Yeah. And then the concern I have is, is this is an unusual budget, in that we've never had this AgSTEM program with this degree of tuition coming in later, and that concept. And I would strongly advocate that the superintendent vet anything going out in the way of explanation with our council, to make sure that we do not step on, across that line, and advocate when we're not supposed to. And what you may find is, is that you don't get to put any of that in the budget, in the materials you send out. And that's why I raised this question over a month ago, when I said that if and when we send this budget out with this large increase, that's really not a large increase, that if we were going to advocate for that, and try to tell people, although the increase looks like this, not as big as it looks, because that should have been done before now. And I'm afraid that, you know, Pete's concerned, and I share his concern, this budget get through on the first track. And one of the ways you get it through is to sell it. Now, I know that the superintendent, and Stephanie, and others have been going around and making a pitch in the various towns, but I don't know whether you've made the pitch to all of the people. Now, you can still make pitches in towns and advocate, every board member can advocate their, you know what, off over this budget. What we can't do is spend money as a district. So if there was any plan for something to go out in the mail, that's a problem. We have to check to make sure that we don't step over any lines with what's on our website. I mean, not, I think the websites might, there might be a little room, but I don't know. And that's something that we need to check. All I'm saying is, I don't want to see us with a complaint filed with the, with the, whatever commission it is, Freedom of Information Commission, or whatever it is. I don't want to see a complaint filed with that commission because we didn't have a handle on this, and step up and do it correctly, because this is, this is an easy one to have an issue with. And I want to make sure we do it right. That's all, that's all I'm advocating. I mean, I'd like to, I really would like to see stuff go out in the mail until everybody's had every question answered. But I know we have time limitations.
So Greg, just to give an update of where we are. We have gone to every Board of Finance in the three towns, and we've also done the community conversation in all three towns. We did present what the budget was going to look like, as well as what the revenues were looking like. But to say, no, there have been no mailers that have gone out.
Can I ask a question? How many people came to those budget conversations, other than, not the Board of Finance ones, I'm talking about the ones where you had people?
I'd say Bridgewater was well-attended. Washington was well-attended. I can say Roxbury was not as well-attended. I want to say we, but yeah, no, if you were asking percentage-wise of the households that are there, no, we did not, we did not make a dent in that number.
Okay. But the intention is to go out with mailers still, right?
Right.
We'd like to inform our-
Okay.
It's just, I think what Greg is saying, it just has to be factual. You cannot advocate at all. No large language, no small language. It just has to be, these are the facts.
No bold.
Well, no, it's more than that. I mean, it's not just, I mean, we, we know that if you underline stuff or put it in bold type, that's advocacy.
Yes.
Okay. But here, I'm worried about the question of whether talking about money that's not technically part of the budget, but is coming in because of enrollment figures that we have established for the year, I want to make sure that that's fair game to be in a factual presentation, and that because it's technically not part of the budget, that it isn't wiped out, and it doesn't look like advocacy. I mean, I'm very concerned about that. And I want to make sure that our council is blessed, whatever we send out. Thank you.
Okay. Peter?
Just a note on what's going to be sent out. What kind of participation do you want the board to have in what's going to be sent to the public? Is the superintendent just going to put a document together, mailer, mail it out, or are we going to be involved in exactly?
Well, I think if a document is put together after it's been vetted by council-
Okay.
-to then share it with the board as an FYI. And if you've had questions before it gets sent, and if you've had questions to contact superintendent directly with those questions or comments, I don't see any issue with doing that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we get the right, that what gets out there, people can't dissect it and, you know, back to the board and say, how did this get there, how did that get there?
Yeah. But I think it would be better for all of our sake if, if what we saw was a product that was otherwise ready to go out, and using the board as a, as a final vet to see if, if everything's okay. If board members have something in particular, they, a point they want to press or impress in the document, I'd suggest you reach out to the superintendent directly with that input, so she can factor that into the draft or whatever. Again, to Greg's point, there's not going to be a lot of room here to get creative, but there are points that need to be made. So. All right. Again, we have, I believe, oh, Stephanie, sorry. I didn't see your hand up.
Sorry, one last question. About how, how far away are we from sending that mailer out? Ish. I know it's, I know it's a draft.
I think, in all honesty, it's now important that we change the number that we've done tonight.
Right.
I think we've got a one-pager that now getting it through our legal, so that way they can take out if anything looks emphasized, what have you. But I think the content of the factual information is, is in place. I think now just making certain that there's nothing that looks like we're advocating for anything. So to say I can probably get it in front of legal within the week would be an accurate statement.
So the intent was always for it to just be completely neutral, not advocacy, just factual, and it would still go out at some point this week? Okay. And we are allowed to spend money on information?
Yes.
Yes.
Information.
Just wanted to hear.
Right.
Wait, thanks.
Why can't we?
I think, when you say going out this week, you said going to legal this week, not in the mail this week. Okay.
We don't want to go out too early.
No, right.
Yeah, it's true. There is a timing aspect to that, right?
Yeah, yeah. Not too early.
Right. Okay. Motion's on the floor. It's been seconded to set the district meeting for May 6, 2019, or referendum date for May 7, 2019. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All right, the motion passed unanimously. Now we're adjourned.